Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Planning Commission. Hope everyone is doing well tonight. Thank you all for being here.
John, excuse me. This is the December second.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You are right. I have, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I apologize. The December second meeting. So if you'll give me just a second, I'm going to turn back my uh turn back my agenda. You did. So the first thing up on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from our November eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Thanks for that correction, Lloyd. Is there a motion, please, on the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of November eighteenth, twenty twenty is written into the record.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved in the second. And Commissioner Winborn?
I.
Commissioner Hopkins?
I.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I.
And Commissioner Wessel?
I.
And I will vote I as well. That passes unanimously. And then that takes us to our site plan agenda. And there is one tonight for SP dash eight six four eight dash twenty twenty. And actually, there's an accompanying environmental component, ENV dash eight six four nine dash twenty twenty. Construction of a new nine point five four acre park at the former CPSC site at one zero nine zero one Darnstown Road in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. This is for final site plan and final forest conservation plan. And presenting from staff is Chris Berger. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. If the tech team could please pull up page seven, please. And while they're doing that, the applicant, the city of Gaithersburg has submitted final site plan application, SP eight six four eight twenty twenty and final forest conservation plan, ENV eight six four nine twenty twenty. Seeking approval for the development of a nine point five four acre city park. The application comes before the planning commission in accordance with sections twenty four dash one two and twenty four dash one six eight of the city code. The plan proposes parking, community gardens, bicycle skills course, open space, pavilions, a playground, fitness pods, and a welcome plaza. The proposed park is owned MXD Mixed Use Development and is located at one zero nine zero one Darnstown Road. We can go to the next page, page eight, please. The former Consumer Product Safety Commission site was originally a Department of Defense site from nineteen fifty five through nineteen seventy five and contained associated support facilities for the nearby Nike missile site. The CPSC, a federal agency whose mission is to reduce the unreasonable risk of deaths and injuries associated with consumer products, obtained the property in nineteen seventy five to conduct research and testing. The subject property was annexed into the city in nineteen eighty seven with X dash one four one. The Department of Parks Recreation and Culture formally declared an interest in acquiring the property from the federal government in mid twenty twelve. The city's application for acquisition was approved later there with the condition that the area be used as a public park. A quick claim deed was executed and filed on January twenty fourth, twenty fourteen. On May thirtieth, twenty fourteen, the mayor and city council held a work session on the future use of the subject property. In June twenty fifteen, the mayor and city council appointed an ad hoc committee to review the property and make recommendations for its use. The former CPSC Site Planning Ad Hoc Committee consisted of ten residents from Washingtonian Woods, Wesley, and other neighborhoods in the city. The committee met eight times from January twenty sixteen through May of that year with Flora Teeter Landscape Architects and city staff to review designs and develop recommendations regarding the proposed site. On Jan, on June eighth, twenty sixteen, the committee hosted a meeting on site to present its findings to the community. And on August first of that year, three committee members presented recommendations for the park at that evening's mayor and city council meeting. The joint public hearing was held for sketch plan SK eight two seven one twenty nineteen on December second, twenty nineteen, before the mayor and city council and the planning commission. The mayor and city council approved sketch plan, the sketch plan on February third, twenty twenty by resolution R oh nine twenty and a joint public hearing for schematic development plan SDP eight two seven five twenty nineteen was held on March second, twenty twenty. The SDP was approved on May fourth by resolution R twenty five twenty. If we can go to page nine, packet page nine, please. It is staff's opinion that the project meets the goals of the master plan. First, the property is noted in the two thousand nine land use element of the master plan with the recommendation that prior to any proposed reuse of the site, an environment, environmental assessment should be performed to determine if any remediation is necessary. This assessment was completed. The land use element further recommends that the property's institutional land use designation be reevaluated when the CPSC vacated the site. Next, for the two thousand nine transportation element of the master plan, the new pedestrian pathways promote connectivity with the existing transportation network by providing a new pedestrian pathway interconnected with existing state and city right of way. The city's marshaling pedestrian connection will be a particularly particular improvement as the plan activates an existing dead end street. The marsh lane connection also encourages the sharing of access points between adjacent properties and creates new pedestrian connections by enhancing connectivity between an existing residential community and the new park by leveraging existing public right of way. The marsh lane connection to the Washingtonian Woods neighborhood encourages and promotes the city as a multimodal community and reduces the dependence upon vehicles by providing auto alternatives. The plan also includes bicycle parking and the ride on bus stop near the park's Darnstown Road entrance. This stop offers park patrons the opportunity to utilize mass transit. The Parks Recreation and Culture element of the twenty eighteen master plan called for developing the subject property while preserving the site as passive parkland and enhancing the environment for current residents of the site. The stormwater management is to provide additional habitat. This project adheres to what was intended for the property by maintaining many of the existing trees and topography and by providing open fields and the creation of the bioretention and swales to treat stormwater on site. The proposed plan meets all five goals listed in that twenty eighteen Parks Record Culture Master Plan. It preserves and expands opportunities for green spaces by retaining the majority of the park's open spaces. It develops bicycle and pedestrian connectivity with the adjoining residential communities through the development of trail systems and the construction of the shared use paths at the Darnstown Road and marsh lane entrances. It promotes health and wellness for all ages and abilities with its various methods such as the play equipment, trail network, and fitness pods. The park utilizes sustainable practices in the preservation and acquisition of parkland by retaining much of the existing can tree canopy coverage and planting of additional vegetation. The on site, on site stormwater management and again retention of much the existing open space, including the natural geography. And the park will develop education and learning opportunities with this program. Finally, the project meets the purposes and intents of the MXD zone as detailed in section twenty four dash one sixty D point one of the city code as the park encourages design flexibility. And as you will see in the forthcoming presentation, the plan includes add alternatives. And the approved sketch plan allows for the potential construction of a recreational building on the property. The plan enhances and complements the residential environment by providing recreation and open space and it reduces reliance upon automobile use and encourages pedestrian and other non vehicular circulation systems within with its establishment of multimodal pathway entrances at Darnstown and Marsh Lane. It retains and provides usable open space and active recreation areas close to residential populations. The internal trail network meets the need for the development of comprehensive non vehicular circulation networks separated from vehicular roadways, which constitute a system of linkages among residential areas, open spaces, recreational areas, and the public facilities. And the park provides a nat, superior natural environment by the preservation of trees, the topography, and geologic features. And joining us tonight are from staff, we have Deputy City Manager Dennis Inzlinger, Director of Park Recreation and Culture Carolyn Muller, Public Works Project Manager Saniel Prithbraj, and from the design team, we have Lydia Kimball and Alice Storm Jones of Flora Teeter Landscape Architects and Brendan Bishop of Triad Engineering. And before Alice begins the presentation of the plans, I believe Deputy City Manager Inzlinger would like to speak.
Great, thanks, Chris. I won't address everybody on the team, but welcome to the entire team. Thank you so much for for being here tonight. And Dennis, please take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the.
I'm not the mayor.
I'm used to another meeting, aren't I? Good evening, members of the planning commission. Tonight, we're really excited to present the final site plan for the former CPSC site tonight. As Chris Berger noted, this is really the culmination of an extensive planning process which started back in twenty fifteen with the appointment of the ad hoc committee that was charged with coming up with design concepts of the project. There were a number of also meetings before the city council. Once we did the design concept and moved forward, this project started out with a couple of design features that are no longer in the design based upon modifications made at the request of the public and also just based on the needs of the community. With that, I'll just turn it over to Alice, who is with Flora Teeter, and they will make a more formal presentation about what we're proposing at the park at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, everybody. Again, I am Alice Storm Jones from Flora Teeter Landscape Architects and my colleague Lydia Kimball. She, I will do most of the presentation, but we might flip flop a little bit around and responding to some of the comments. And then Brendan Bishop from Triad will also chime in when appropriate to speak to some points. Can we start with page nine of the presentation? In the packet? Okay, so if we can go to the next page. So we are going to quickly go over some of the site context in the process. Much of the process that we have in here, Chris has already spoken to, so I'll go quickly over it, but there are a few little items that I would like to touch on before we move on. The bulk of what we will be going over is the design of the park, which I'm sure everybody is most interested in, which will hit all those elements. Chris gave a good prelude to many of the items that we're going to talk about, but we'll just talk about them in a little bit more detail. And then we'll end with questions that we can address from from everybody. Can we go to the next page? Again, site context, just kind of locating where we are in the world and in the city of Gaithersburg. So you can see Darnstown Road and Route twenty eight, which is our primary connection, that is our only vehicular connection. And then you can see the neighborhoods of Wesley and Washingtonian Woods. The park is nine point five four acres. You can see how it is, it's, we've called it, I have a flag because we have the entrance road and then the majority of the property is within the surrounding neighborhoods. So can we go to the next slide? As Chris had mentioned previously, just going over quickly a little bit of the process, but this is the approved sketch plan that was approved in July of twenty nineteen. And if we went to go to the next one, we have the approved schematic development plan. And then the next page is also the second sheet of that schematic development plan, which was approved in March of twenty twenty or was presented in March twenty twenty. And then if we go to the next page, set of two sheets, we have the approved stormwater design. This, the stormwater management and the ESC plans, it's a bit of a process. It's a three step process that required, that's required by the city of Gaithersburg and the state of Maryland. The first two steps are the concept and the preliminary steps, which requires a lot more coordination, which we've gone through. And then the third and final step, which is the final approval we just received in October of twenty twenty. So this is complete and we have final approval on our stormwater management. Do you want to move to the next? And then the next page as well. So now we're going to move into the design. If you go to the next page. So we'll, we'll hit on the different elements of the proposed design. Again, this is kind of an overview. Again, you can see our, our flag, the improved access road. So that is an improved access road, which is the asphalt drive that is existing there. It's being brought up to current standards. And then, as you can see, adjacent to it is a ten foot shared use path, which will accommodate both pedestrians and the, and bicycle movements from Darnstown Road. We are going to be including a new park sign. If anybody's familiar with the signage that was just installed at Discovery Park, it will look very similar to that entrance sign. It's also at Constitution Garden. So there's going to be a familiar vehicular vocabulary with your signage there. And then you can see where the proposed pedestrian connection at Marsh Lane is. That will be a pedestrian only connection. There's no vehicular access to that point. And then we can move on to the next slide, which shows a little bit more detail of the interior of the park. So we'll hit on all of these elements as we go through the presentation. But as Chris had said previously, these were all things that we were lucky enough to work with the ad hoc group back in twenty sixteen when we went through the process of master planning for the park. And many of the elements that you see here are those elements we spoke about at that time, which is a movement throughout the park. So there's a fitness loop, the fitness loose loop takes you to different moments and elements along that walking path. You can see that we have accommodated community gardens, which was really important to the working group areas for picnicking. So we have, that has evolved through the design process. And what we've, what the final iteration is, are these little pods. And we'll get into a little bit of more information about that, but there are six of those throughout the park. You'll see a playground area that accommodates children of two to five and five to twelve play groups. And then a bike skills course, which will hit a little bit more on that in a bit. Also, there's an open lawn and the idea is that that's available for different programming through your through the rec and park and arts. And that can be used for different elements and then also just passive play and just a beautiful open lawn for folks in the community to use. And then, as you can see, and we'll, we'll talk about the walking path in a little bit more detail, but the walking path goes around the perimeter of the park. It's, one of the goals was to have something about approximately half a mile. We didn't quite, we weren't quite able to hit half a mile, but it's point four miles. And then we will have mile markers along that, that walking path as well. So you, if you do, if you were out there for exercise or you wanted to keep track of your movement, you can kind of keep track with the mile markers that will be in the, the ground in the asphalt as you're walking along the pathway. And then there's also benches along the walkway as well. We can move to the next sheet. And something that we want to make sure that we brought up too was that we've gone through the process for forest conservation. So the next two sheets will show those two sheets that had been approved and we've worked with the city to make sure that those are all. No, if you can go back. Sorry, one more. There you go. So we have been working through those. As you can see, these were prepared by Triad and Flora Teeter for the, and what they show are the necessary calculations to determine the mitigation measures that are needed in the park. And, and what that means is that we did an inventory of all the trees on the park within the property and identified those trees by both species and size and caliber and health. So we, we documented all of those tree species there. And then the, the next sheet shows all of those trees that we have indicated and they all have a number. So they all go back to a different sheet. And if any, but if we needed to, you could go back and see which trees or what species and what caliber they are. Just to let you know, there are twenty two trees existing on a site that are between twelve and twenty four DBH that are going to be saved. There are twenty two specimen sized trees on the site that will be removed, but of those all but eight or all but one of them are in poor or fair health. And when we say poor or fair health, it means there are some of those trees that are of that size. They've had lightning damage. There are a few that are cabled together right now. So those are the trees that we're removing from the site. The rest of them, we are preserving and keeping for the integrity of the park. Just an FYI, we are adding eighty seven trees to comply with the forest conservation mitigation requirements. And two hundred and twenty two total trees will be planted on the site when the park is complete. So do we want to move on? Can we move on to the next sheet? And then the next one? So this is getting into a little bit of the more information of the park. And so this diagram shows the different hardened skate materials that will be on a ground plane in the park. So you can see that the dark gray is an asphalt walking path. And then we also have markers indicating how wide those paths are. So most of those walkways are ten feet wide. And then you can see anything that's in that light yellow, that's a concrete surface. And you can see that those are primarily associated with the pavilions. So anywhere there is a pavilion and a picnic pod that will be on a concrete pad. And then the very colorful blob in the middle is our playground area, and that will be what we call PIP, poured in place safety surfacing. It's that rubber material that you see very often in playgrounds. And as we get into the details of the playground, there is kind of a space and exploration theme to that area. And so we are going to be adding a very colorful kind of arc to the middle of it that's activated with stars and shooting stars and planets and things like that. So that's going to be the kind of little fun element within that PIP surfacing. And then the last material that you'll see indicated there is that red. And that is not red mulch. It is going to be a natural hardwood mulch. And that's going to be located in that'll be located in the community garden area. So you can see that up to the top right of, or top left of the, the plan. There is a hierarchy of the walkways. So a lot of the walkways are ten feet to accommodate larger movements and more pedestrians moving around the space. Some of the smaller secondary walkways are eight feet. And then the, the most narrow, the smallest ones that are kind of connectors from the major walkways to some of the smaller areas are six feet, but six foot is, would be the most narrow pathways, most of them being ten feet wide. Can we move on to the next sheet? So going into a little bit more detail, the community gardens. This area is a fully fenced garden. We're actually specifying a fence that goes below grade. So we will deter burrowing animals from entering into the community, community garden. And then also in a height that we're hoping to deter deer from drop, or from deer for jumping into the garden. If, if anybody's been out in sight recently, you can see there's a lot of wildlife out there currently. So we already know that that's already on the site, but this will be fully enclosed. There will be a locked gate with, and anybody who has a garden plot will have entrance abilities to get into the garden. You can see that they will be raised garden plots that element that's labeled as number two are those raised garden plots. And those are also, you can see as you would enter in the, at the gate, that area is hardscape. So it's also ADA accessible. So if somebody in a wheelchair or with mobility issues, you could come in and you could use that plot right there. The item identified as number one is our garden shed. That is a prefab structure that's coming in. And a majority of that structure will be used for housing supplies and materials that would be needed for the garden. A small area down to the lower left hand side would be an IT room, and that will be used in a conditioned space that will be used for the IT equipment needed for the interior of the park, which a majority of that will go to the blue lights, the security light system and phones within the, the interior of the park. You can see the fence that we're talking about is item number three, and then also item number four are rain barrels. So we're going to put, we will have gutters on our sloped roof of the garden shed, and we will harvest the water that comes off of that shed. And they will go into those barrels that will be used to supplement a water source, two water sources that are already in the garden. So the garden will have two points of water access and then supplementing that will be the water harvested in the rain barrels adjacent to the garden shed. Can we move on to the next sheet? So now we're moving to the playground. Just went, can you, can you go back to the previous one? Okay. And then number twenty four. I'm sorry. I thought we'd skip the sheet. So moving over into the playground area, this is, as Chris mentioned, we do have alternates and I will refer to this as the Bates bed. So this is this is the base playground equipment that we have going into the park. You can see again that there is a space theme to this. What you're looking at are two sets of playground equipment. One is for two to five year olds, which is that image on the lower right hand side. And the other two images are the pieces for the five to twelve year olds, so older children. And then we are also going to be including some climbing rocks. You can see a bay of multiple bays of swings. So the swings will accommodate older children, younger children in belt swings, and then also a mobility swings at the end. And then we also have a, what I like to call them, it's a nest wing. So it, it's, you're able to use it for multiple children. You can kind of hang into it. It's a little bit more free flowing and you can kind of use it in difference, in different ways. We can move on to the next one. And so, and this is the element that is the add alternate. So this is our alternate playground piece. It's a custom piece by the manufacturer Compan. And this would replace the five to twelve play piece in the previous slide. So this would be, we would still keep the two to five year old pieces, the swing and the rocks and some of the other play equipment, but this would replace the older children's play equipment, the five to twelve year old. And this is a multi-story play piece with this rocket theme and has two slides and multiple ways for children to enter in and climb up into it. And again, this is the alternate option for the playground. It is fully to code. It meets every kind of safety requirement necessary. But it's just a nice custom piece that feels really unique and it could feel really special for the park. Move on to the next slide. And then also just speaking to a couple of the other site features within the park, and these kind of are scattered around and some of them are located in the play area. So we will be salvaging boulders that we find as we're doing excavation and earth moving through the construction of the park. We have indicated that if we find twelve boulders, we would love to use them and incorporate them into the park, potentially incorporating to the end, the edges of the play area as seating elements. And then there's a couple of other areas that we've indicated that could go into along the pathway just to add a natural feel to them. If we don't find them, then we don't have them in the park. But if we do find them in excavation, we'd like to use them. I, if you've been out in sight, you can, there's one that's already visible. So we know we have at least one that we can use. We're hoping to find some additional ones. The pavilion and the bottom left hand side, you can see that's, it's called a kite structure. We've oriented them so that have maximum shade for the seating below. These images show green, but the colors that we've selected for the park are going to be blue. So the framing will be in a gray color and then the roof will be blue as well as the picnic tables. They will be blue as well. Each pavilion has two picnic tables underneath it. The picnic tables, there's one ADA accessible picnic table, and then all of the pads will be fully accessible and graded to allow for full accessibility within the pavilion around the tables and allow for accessibility to the ADA table as well. The, the bench at the top right of that image is a backed bench that we're going to be using and locating in the play area. We do know that there's a wide variety of folks and caregivers that bring children to playgrounds. We want to make sure that we have a comfortable seating area in there. We want to make sure that we have a comfortable seating area in there. And we are going to be using that back bench in the playground area. Can we move to the next slide? So this area is, we're calling the welcome area or the drop-off area. This is adjacent to the parking lot. You can see that it's an area where you could pull off, drop somebody off that's using the park and then continue on your way or drop somebody off and then go over and park. The idea of this area is it's kind of a centralized area. It's the welcome point for folks entering the park. We will have benches there. This is one of the locations where we're going to be using the solar trash can. There's a water station that will be located in this area as well. And it has a pet bowl and a water filling station as well, water bottle filling station. And then at the last time we were here, when we were here previously, someone had mentioned potentially including a little library. So we have found an off-the-shelf project for that. And we'll be using, we'll be locating a little library in this welcome area as well. And then the item, the little library is labeled number five on the plan. The benches are number twos. You can see the water station is number four. And then number one is a kiosk, which will be three-sided kiosk with a roof. You can see that image number one. That will be, that will include three sides. Two sides will be panels of information that's going to be provided by the city of Gaithersburg. So one will be an information panel saying, talking much about the history that Chris touched on at the beginning of this presentation, the history of the site and the history of kind of the area. And then also, obviously, the, the other panel will be rules of the park. And then a third panel will be a community board. That'll be open for people to do postings. And then potentially for Park and Rec and Arts to advertise kind of activities or any kind of things that might be going on in the park that you want to make the community aware of. Can we move on to the next sheet? This is when the areas again where we have some alternates. So the alternate one is potentially to include a portable toilet enclosure. So this would be an extension of the hardscape, the extension of that concrete. And then we would use a wooden fence-like enclosure around it. And then porta-potties would be included in the interior of that. That would be facilitated by the city of Gaithersburg. So right now, what we're showing in this area is two accessible porta-potties and then a third general one as well. And then if we can move to the next slide. The second alternate for this area is a full-service restroom building. This would be fully plumbed. It would have electric. It would have heating. It would be a fully up-and-running utility bathroom. And this is a prefab structure as well. It comes fully built on a flatbed above a truck. And it comes with a fully constructed foundation that we would just install and hook up to the utilities. It would include two unisex bathrooms that are fully accessible. And both bathrooms would have baby changing stations with them. It would also include a mechanical room and a small storage area for janitorial services and kind of any kind of storage you would need to facilitate that restroom. Can we move to the next slide? So this is one of my favorite elements of the park. And it's the bike skills course. I think this would be a great attribute to the, the city. And I have a young bike rider in my house right now who's very excited about potentially coming down to see this. But this element is a design-build element in our project. So we don't have the final design yet. But what we have indicated in the, in the drawings is that this is going to be designed to a very specific set of requirements and criteria. I've learned a lot about these trails in the research for it. And what this track is going to be is an asphalt, asphalt track that's built in layers. And will be, it'll have banks and rollers and berms. And it'll be designed to allow somebody, both learners, learning, those learning to cycle and those who are, you know, more advanced. It'll allow them to kind of circle the track in a fluid movement where you're going up and down. And it'll kind of, you'll kind of move with your own speed. And then your own, as you, as you build up speed, you can kind of go around the track. We've also indicated that the track needs to be separated to allow for more advanced riders on the exterior and then allow for younger and learning cyclists to go in a different track, a separated track that they can get to without kind of conflicting with those that might be more advanced. Some of the elements that we want to include, that we are requiring to be included in, in the design of this is we have over-scaled cones that kids can kind of go around. And then a few tunnels and, and things like that, just to kind of activate and make the space a little bit more fun. In addition to the bike trail, we have located one of our six pavilions here. So you can see an adjacent to that, which will kind of work with a nice vignette of what this element will add to the park. Is that, you know, if you're there with your cyclist, you can kind of hang out underneath that pavilion. There are two tables there, again, access, fully accessible. And then also adjacent to that are some bike racks. And we are including a bike repair station. So that is a fully installed, the station that's, you know, installed into the, the concrete there. It comes with a stand. So if you need to work on your bike, all the tools are hanging off of it. You can just work on your, your bike right there at the, at the bike repair station. And then there's also a pump there. So hopefully that'll complement the activities happening at the, at the, the bike skills course pretty well. Can we move on to the next sheet? So again, complimenting the health and wellness element like Chris talked about as well. One of the, the other elements of the park is a fitness pod. So this is located closer in the park on the other side of the open lawn oval by Marsh Lane. And this is a fitness pod. What we're showing here are, I believe it's ten different pieces of equipment. And what they do is they, it's a complimentary set of pieces of equipment that come together as a package. So they are put together by professionals to complement one another. And if you want to do a full workout, all those pieces are located there. I believe six of the ten are accessible, fully accessible. And then also, most of them are for dual users. It's not more than dual users. So these are not just individual pieces of equipment for one person to use. Multiple people can use most of them. And then also within this space, we've kind of done it in a design that has a semi-circle. So we can add some planting in the middle. Hopefully, we will be locating a large tree in the middle there to provide some shade and a seat wall for those who would like to do, you know, stretching or want to take a break and sit on a wa, sit on the seat wall for a little bit. And then also it's adjacent to, again, one of the picnic pods, which includes two picnic tables. And then we have also located here some additional bike racks too. So if community members want to ride their bikes over to this area, they can easily do that and unlock up their bike as they're moving over to the fitness pod. Can we move on to the next sheet? And then here's the park entry sign. Again, this should look familiar to anybody who's similar with Discovery Park. This will hopefully have a name soon, so it won't be park name. But it will be located right there at Darstown Road. And all the information that's required by the acquisition of this parkland will be located on this part of the sign as well. And then it's going to be, it's going to have the same aesthetic that you see at Discovery Park and should match into the city of Gaithersburg aesthetic very well. Moving on to the next sheet. Here's some additional elements that we haven't talked about yet. The trail mound markers, you can see at the, the bottom there. Those are going to be actually installed flush to the surface of the walk, walking trail. So that'll be in the asphalt as you're walking the circular loop of the park. Again, it's, it's just over point four miles. So there'll be a start marker and then you'll see point one mile as you're walking around the circle of, of the fitness path. There are two pet waste stations located throughout the park. So those will be mounted and you will have all the facilities you need to make sure that those activities happen. And then also, what we, what we've decided is that the perimeter fence after an evaluation and testing is in, we've identified that it's in good shape and that it's still solid and secure. But we are going to make any kind of revisions needed to, to fix any kind of holes or loose mashing in the, in the fence. You can see at the top, there are some arms with barbed wire. Those will be all removed. So we will keep this fence as it is. And most of the planting adjacent to it will stay in place as well. If there's any locations where it needs to be fixed, we will do that and repaint as necessary. But the fencing that's there currently will stay in place. Who wants the next sheet? And then just quickly, if anybody's interested, I'm happy to go over the planting plan in detail. But just the brief overview of the different planting materials that we will be using. You know, we will have an orchard that's located adjacent to the community garden. We'll have the community garden, which are individual plots that community members can take care of and, and they'll be able to plant what they want in there. We will have areas of low-mow areas, which will be indicated with signage throughout the park. Again, kind of alluding to their sustainable practices and, and, you know, allowing for natural processes and, and inviting natural wildlife into, into the park. I, I can go over to this more when we get into the, when we review the graphic again. But we made an extreme effort to keep the existing trees on sites. These existing trees, many of them are in beautiful trees and they're in good condition. So whenever possible, we kept them. And then we also really made an effort to keep a lot of the existing vegetation around the perimeter because we know that's really important for both the aesthetic of the park and for adjacent neighbors. And then also we have areas of open lawn that's not programmed. It's just open passive space to allow community members to kind of activate and use the park as they want. Really making this their own and, and kind of allowing people to, you know, recreate as they want. And then also allowing Carolyn and her staff to kind of program it as necessary and needed throughout the seasons. And, and that is one thing that we did talk about, especially in the ad hoc group, was how this park will be used in the seasons. So we wanted to make sure that there's a lot of, there's a lot of use through, throughout even the winter that can be applied to this park. So open spaces need potentially areas for people to sled or cross-country ski and things like that. So just knowing that there, this park will be used year-round. And I believe that might be the last slide, but you can move to the next one. Yeah, questions?
All right, thanks. Is there any more to the presentation from anybody else? Civil landscape, anything else that you want to talk about or you want to get questions from the commissioner at this point?
I think we're okay with questions, but we're all available to answer.
Can I cut in for a moment here?
Yeah, Chris.
If Alice, I don't know if you or Lydia or Brendan would like to speak to the variance request for the removal of the eight specimen trees. I know you mentioned that as part of the forest conservation plan. But if you can just say why those eight trees need to be removed and in accordance with section twenty-two dash one-two B of the city code.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Chris. Those trees, I think Alice missed it when she was talking about it. There are twenty-two existing specimen trees, eight of which are going to be removed. I think she exercised all of them. And seven of those are in poor condition, like she did mention. Those trees need to be removed for the final plan to be in accordance with the sketch plan and schematic development plan in order to achieve the project goals for the site. And also to have more public welfare for the, for the community. And most of those trees were ornamental trees planted during previous development or in poor condition because of not being used. So with the new plantings on site, it will more than accommodate, mitigate and improve the environmental qualities of the park.
Thank you, Brendan.
Right, great. Well, let me start off at least with a couple of questions to the team. I guess the first one, a couple of details, then I'll move around the site plan. Alice, the pavilions you talked about, the picnic pavilions, are those shade structures? Are they also a solid, you know, sort of get-out-of-the-rain structure?
Yes, very much so. And they will have gutters incorporated with them that we've incorporated into the stormwater management.
Okay. And then I guess Carolyn, for you, the garden plots that are being proposed, the community garden plots, how, how does, how is access to those managed? Is it a, is it a, like generally, how you, how do you program, who gets to use them and how they're maintained?
So we are planning an application process. And we will, you know, hopefully we'll have a lot of people who are interested. So I, just working through this with other agencies, they can have a waiting list. If there are more folks who are interested, then there are plots. But people would enter into an annual agreement.
Is there a fee for them or are they free, just first come, first served?
So there will be a nominal fee. Right now, we're, we're still working on the plan, but right now we're looking somewhere around thirty dollars a year. We are also going to try to hold some of the plots for folks who are, who would qualify as lower income and to help subsidize those as well.
Okay. And, and while I have you unmuted, for the, the proposed restroom pavilion, I know there's a, there's an add alternate that I guess is going to be really driven by ca, by cost and the available funding. But from an operational perspective, you've, you've got the whole park system in the city to kind of compare it to. And, and you have both permanent facilities and, and the temporary ones, I think, scattered throughout different, different parks. Do you have a preference operationally? Or, you know, i, i, if you had your choice, if money wasn't the issue, the add alternate wasn't the issue, would you prefer a permanent one? Or is there some, some advantage to having the, the temporary porta-potty-style restrooms?
So we have very few parks that have permanent restroom of structures within them. Our preference would be to do the enclosure with the portables because we can contract that out with a company that would come, you know, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis to clean them. And, and if we have an actual building, then we will have to increase, you know, staff costs and operational costs to keep those clean. We're worried about safety, if people can get into the building during the hours that it's locked. So we, we definitely would prefer to do the, the portable restrooms.
Okay. And, and who's going to have the final, final call on the sheet? Will, will you have that if, if given the preference between the two, if there's the money, the money's available to do it? Will you make the, make the decision or how will that be played out?
Um, I believe that our mayor and council will make some of these final decisions.
Hey, that's a big one for them, huh?
We'll get the final vote.
Okay.
That we will, we will see where it comes in budget-wise, but yes.
Okay, sounds good. And now I'm going to just ask a couple of quick questions. I think this is to the, to the design side of the, of the team. The marsh lane access, the pedestrian access, what sort of improvements? I mean, I assume right now the, the dead end, you know, back, way back when, when the neighborhood was laid out and the road system was laid out, there were some, some anticipation that Marsh Lane would connect with something, but not knowing exactly what. It's just the kind of a conventional dead end in a ballpark. What, what happens at that edge and what happens at that point where the, where the, the path is, is tied in? What kind of improvements will be included there?
So right now it's a pedestrian, it's a pedestrian connection. It's ten feet wide. It connects to the northern side of that Marsh Lane Hammerhead. And what we are proposing is that most of that retaining wall that's existing there is staying in place as well as much of the existing planting. We will be removing a portion of it to the north of, of that Marsh Lane area. And then we'll be including, there is an elevation change there. So what will happen is it's, it's, it'll be a kind of a ramp. It'll be an accessible ramp. It'll be less than, maybe Brendan, you can speak to that, exactly what that percentage is. But it'll be accessible and then it'll connect to the interior circulation path of the park.
So the, the, the walkway itself will stay to one, to So the, the, the walkway itself will stay to one, to the north side of the, of the actual roadway? So that somebody coming up out of it will be head into the middle of the road. They'll be off to the side. Okay.
Yes, we are not dumping people out into the middle of the street or anything.
Okay.
All accessible and they'll be able to cross that hammerhead safely and in a striped area.
Okay. And what's on either side of it? Is it just landscaping? Is there another fence? Is there some sort of a gateway feature? What's the?
So the fence, there, it is fully fenced right now. We will be adding kind of an entry point there. So there will be, we will cut the fence to the nearest posts to allow that entrance to be made. And then if you look at the, we can look at the planting plan, but the planting plan shows significant planting going back in there. As I said, many of those trees that are existing there are staying in place. And then we are supplementing it quite extensively with new planting as well.
Okay. But, but the, the sightlines would be, would it be plantings that would create a visual screen to the park or most? Or would it be more of a, of a hedge-like character where you can still sort of maintain a view back into the, into the space?
Um, maybe Lydia, you can jump in, but I think they're, I believe it's shrubs and perennials.
It's lower plantings on either side of the path as it, as it meets marsh lane. Yeah, we, we wanted to maintain some visibility through there, but supplement the existing planting.
Okay. And then on the, the northwest side, the, it's the, it's the edge of the site that best way that I can describe it is it's where the path comes the closest to the, to the boundary. So it's sort of north or excuse me, northeast, I guess of the, of the community gardens, but there's a long stretch of path there that runs up fairly close to the, the fence line. What, what's the character of the buffer there for, for the, the planting plan?
Um, my recollection, we can pull up the planting plan if we want to.
There's a full fence along there that stays, right? That's, that's.
Yes, exactly. And then we're, we're adding new planting along that fence for the entire alignment of that walkway.
Okay.
And I believe we, we just switched it out recently, but we're putting in, I believe, large evergreen, not large, but something like an arborid or Leyland cypress that would create a green wall there, a green hedge.
A full visual screen. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Commissioners, who'd like to jump in with questions? Now again, we're, we're at questions right now and I'll, I'll remind anybody who's watching. We're going to turn it over to public comment here as soon as we get some questions answered on the, on the, on the actual presentation. Danny, I think I saw your hand up first, so please.
Okay. I, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one quick question. And I hope I'm not getting this mixed up with, with another park. But was there, was there an opportunity for a small dog run? Because I'm sure that of course our leash laws will still be in effect. But I mean, it seems like there's a, you know, there's some, there may be an opportunity for that. Was there ever a discussion about that when you, when you were developing this?
Yes. When we were going through the ad hoc process, that was something we brought up and it was something we voted. It was a process that we went through with the group. And I just reviewed that today and that was one of only two items that people strongly were against.
Oh, they were, they were against just like a little small dog run? Wow. I mean, cause there's one, there's one in, near my neighborhood and it's really, really nice. I mean, you can just, you're enclosed, you can let your dog kind of scamper around and, and you're not, you know, offending anyone. So I'm surprised that that was the, the outcome.
I think many people felt that since it was so highly residential around this surrounding area, that many people would keep their dogs in their, their houses. But I, I, I do know that we'll be looking at those things today. That was one of the only things we had, we had black dots and that was only one of two things that got black dots.
But you're going to have mud mitts.
All right. Phil, please.
I just have a couple of questions for staff on, on Marsh Lane in light of some of the public comment and testimony that's in the record specifically related to parking in the public right of way. As it stands now, are there any parking limitations or parking restrictions in that hammerhead on Marsh Lane, on Marsh Lane?
I think I can address that. Actually, right now that's considered a fire lane for the fire trucker emergency. So really there isn't supposed to be any parking, just like there isn't around the cul-de-sac. It is not currently signed unto that effect. We have talked with the neighborhood and those living on Marsh Lane, whether they want that or not, and the city's willing to go and label that no parking. I think from their perspective, it's kind of a, a plus and a minus, because they currently do use it for parking.
Well, that, that is what's, the, the current Google Street View of the end of Marsh Lane is what's rising to most of my questions in light of the concerns that were expressed.
Um, and it's really the residents who live on Marsh Lane who are using it for parking. So if we mark it as no parking, that would mean they would be prohibited from parking on it too. So the last discussions we had with them was it might be better to wait until the park opens to see if that's really an issue.
And, and to that end, you know, where is the, the line for the, the public right of way? Is it directly at the curb? Does it extend on the other side of the curb line at all? You know, what is sort of that D mark between what is public space and what is private space?
I would have to look at what, where the right of way actually ends. There's actually also a utility easement.
Yep.
Adjacent to the right of way. And as a side note, there is a separate project that's not shown on this site plan of constructing a sidewalk on the north side of Marsh Lane that currently doesn't exist. So that would be done and that's actually scheduled to be done this fiscal year within the city. So that, that would provide that connection back up to that main entrance.
So would that, would that sidewalk be constructed, you know, from the existing curb line out into the paved area or into the grass area?
We're actually, it would be instructed to part of the grass area that currently exists on the north side, because that's in the right of way, but we're actually going to narrow the street too. We did try to accommodate as much green space for those two properties on Marsh Lane, one and three, Marsh Lane, to give them as much yard space, even though a lot of that yard space or a portion of that yard space is actually right of way.
Okay. That's all I had for it now.
Thanks, Phil. Anybody else want to get some questions in on the, on the presentation? Okay. Well, let's, let's go to the public and I, I see some hands already up, but I think what we'll do first is have, have our tech team, Chris, why don't you go ahead and play the instructional video, the introduction video for public testimony, please?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, thanks for that. And I see some hands beginning to light up and I'll, and I'll apologize upfront to those in the public that are, that are putting their hand up. The way the, the windows work that I see anyway, there really isn't any particular order. It's more of an alphabetical of who's, who's, who's attending. So if I'm calling somebody and you've had your hand up for a long time, I apologize. We will get to all of the, the raised hands. And so I'd like to start with Carl Van Nest. Top of the list and tech team, if you would invite him into the conversation.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Carl. Thank you.
Great. My name is Carl Van Nest. I want to say first of all, I think this is a, a beautiful park. I think you guys have done a, a great job here. My concern is, is that I'm, I'm a Gethysburg resident who lives in, in next door neighboring Wesley, the Wesley property. And unfortunately, it doesn't look like we have a way to get into the park without exiting Wesley and coming up the path. So a lot of the, the, you know, the, the beautiful bike areas for kids and, you know, a lot of that stuff, you know, we're, we're in essence walled off from it, unless there's something that I don't know about. And there isn't, there isn't a path also between the Wesley neighborhood and the Washington Woods neighborhood that would lead us to the park. So, you know, that's a concern that I've got. It's, 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 it's a big thing. And I've talked to, you know, we've talked to Dennis about it once in a while and, you know, it's a problem and, and we're aware of it, I, I believe. And then another question I had was, is the park going to be Wi-Fi enabled? And lastly, I, I wanted to say I, I want to vote for the fully plumbed restrooms rather than the other restrooms to share my, my thought there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I, I, you know, I believe in the early planning, I can, I don't want to speak for staff, but part of what drives any access point is, is the availability of public land, public access. And I think right now, most of the park, except where Marsh Lane intersects is private property, boundary lines that butt up to the park. So creating a walkway would mean obtaining some of that, that land. And I know that staff has broached the subject and I think over time they can, they can address that or a little bit later on more detail. What I'm going to do is save up the questions and let staff in the, the, the team that presented, address them sort of all at once. So with that, let me look at the list here. The next one on the list I've got is Andrew Martin. Andrew, could you go ahead and unmute yourself and tech team, if you'd bring him in, please?
Uh, sure. Thank you for hearing me out here. You know what? Carl Van Nest asked the same question. I was concerned about access from the Wesley side of the park.
Okay.
Leave it, leave it at that. Thank you.
We'll put, we'll, we'll get staff to comment on that shortly. Alan Kaplan, please. Tech team, would you bring him in, please? Alan, you look, okay, there you go.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can help, you can hear me loud and clear. First of all, thank you so much for everything you guys have done. This is a phenomenal investment and I know you've done a lot of work on this. So thank you for all of your hard work in getting this done. So, you know, the folks on Marsh Lane, so I live on Marsh Lane. Our neighbors and I have met several times to talk about safety and security issues. And we are concerned that, you know, I'm only hearing now for the first time that the street, you're considering narrowing the street. And we already have congestion issues when cars are going, you know, in, in two-way traffic. You know, it's a little bit concerning that there's not more than one entrance and exit point in the neighborhood. We feel that, you know, that, that's a, a small flaw in the plan because it just drives traffic to the court. And, you know, we'd like to get some more insight into, you know, why there's not more than one entrance and exit point into the neighborhood and, you know, from the neighborhood into the park. And then the other piece, my neighbors and I, we did send a letter out, you know, to the city, to this committee with some concerns and we, we just like that letter to be part of the record of this meeting. I understand you, you all discussed it possibly before the meeting, but we, we really did detail many of our concerns. And look, again, we, we endorse this project. We think it's a wonderful project. We're just a little bit concerned about, you know, accidents, security. You know, people are going to be doing U-turns in the court. It's a big neighborhood. Folks are going to be parking, you know, coming from the other side of the, the, the neighborhood to our court, parking there, you know, what, how signage going to look, how are we going to control it? Is there going to be, you know, if someone, you know, folks are not following directions and, and parking everywhere, how are we going to deal with that? So, you know, there is a logistics piece to this that we're just unclear about at this point. And nobody has really talked to the folks at Marsh Lane about it. So I know that's a lot of information, but again, we, we love this. We think it's great. You guys have done a lot of work and we really appreciate it. So just wanted to convey that to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. And as I said, we'll, we'll, we'll have staff address all of the questions at the end of the, the testimony. David Belgard, could we bring him into the discussion, please? And you look like you're, there you go.
Hi, my name's David Belgard. I live in Washington Woods and I was on the ad hoc committee.
Thank you for doing that.
My, it was truly my pleasure. It was a great experience. Hi, Alice. Anyways, I just want to talk about some of the things that I, I know have been of concern and also some of the things that I saw in the presentation, which by the way, it looks great. Very much looking forward to that park being part of our city and so close to where I live, actually. You know, to, to the, to the point about access from Wesley, that was always very high on everything that we had talked about. And it's something that we always thought would be a great benefit to the park. And I know that the city is working on that. On that same side, access from Washington Woods, we thought it would be, be great for as many access points as possible. So it was a very gratified that there's access for Marsh Lane so readily available. I do understand that there are concerns about the safety and security with that access. And I will tell you from my experience on the ad hoc committee, we spent a lot of time discussing not only safety and security with that entrance, but safety and security on the whole at the park. Living in Washington Woods, I, it, it's obviously something that's very important to me, that, that that entrance and our neighborhood itself stays safe. And from everything I've seen, read, been told and researched, it, it, the security issue is not, not going to be a problem. From my experience of the streets of Washington Woods, concerns about people trying to do U-turns that area, it's not a large area. I can't possibly see U-turns happening. And I just want to get that on the record and make sure that everyone takes that into account, that while there may be concerns, if you actually go and view the area, you'll see that many of them probably would not come to fruition. And that's all I really want to say. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. And thank you for, thank you for speaking tonight. Um, and I see Marielle and Kowada is on the, the other hand raised.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Thank you.
Yeah. And I just wanted to know if there was any comment on the timing of this project? And maybe we're getting to that, but then also is there any possibility that we could have access to the park prior to completion or prior to starting the project? I walked up there, I'm in Wesley, I live in Wesley and I walk up the road every day and I look blindly through the fence with my dog saying, wow, we'd like to be able to, you know, walk around in there. And so to know if there was a possibility of access prior to the project.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
Nope. Just I'm really excited about it and really thankful for all the hard work that you've done.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. As I said, we'll get, we'll, we'll have some staff address all of them kind of at once here at the end. Next up is Bill Snyder. Mr. Snyder, are you there? Tech team, do we have connection? Oh, looks like he dropped off. Nope, hands back up. Can we get Bill Snyder on? And he's the last one with a hand up. So let's see if we can.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
I'm being told that he might be using an old version of Zoom and we cannot get him activated to, to speak.
I see. Is there a way to dial in if he took a, took a minute and did that while we moved on to some of the answers? He could still dial in?
He can, he can try and call or disconnect and try and upgrade Zoom if you'd like.
Okay. I hope, Mr. Snyder, you heard that and can, can find a way to get, get word to us. Stay on the line. You might have an opportunity to submit more comments and writing. We'll be discussing that at the end. So if you can't get through, there still may be a chance to get your comments in. So, so don't fret. But please do try a call in and see if you can get that, get in that way. And another hand is up for Ian Chu.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Thank you for joining.
Great. Hi. Yes, the park looks great. I followed along the, the whole meeting. I am a resident of Marsh Lane and I just wanted to voice my concern about that entry point being the only other entry point into the park, because the park looks great and, but it's, it's really big. But our neighborhood is also really big. I don't know, you know, how many others live in this neighborhood. And so if it's possible at all, we would strongly prefer that, you know, I don't know what you guys would need to do, but if there could be some plan to make another, another entrance point from the Washington Woods neighborhood. And also for the street, for Marsh Lane, right now it is wide, but they do have plans to make it narrower. And so for, if there isn't like very obvious, you know, no parking signs or, and also, you know, with the enforcement, if there isn't, if it's not very obvious, I definitely foresee many people, even with our, within our own neighborhood, I can foresee a lot of congestion there because. Um I can foresee a lot of congestion there, cuz the there, it's not like a like a uh roundabout, you know, it is pretty cramped in that area. So for like people who who park there and they need to back up, um and then it's gonna be on to one of our driveways.
Okay.
Okay.
And again, we'll have staff address some of that um when we finish with the comments. Anything else?
Um no, just the uh the, I think the bike track is a great idea. Um and as far as the um parks uh the um the playgrounds go, I, even though it's, it looks really bizarre, I'm in favor of that big rocket because it's unique.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um and I see Bill Snyder is in again. Do we have any um, any luck getting him connected? Tech team, are you able to?
Chairman Bauer, I'm sorry, he still is unable to uh be uh able to talk with us. Um we apologize for that.
All right, well, I hope we can find a way to get his comments here before um before our record closes. Um I don't see any other hands up, um so I'm gonna move to discussion, but recognizing the um recognizing the unusual quality of a Zoom meeting and and how this plays out, I will check the window from time to time if something comes up from someone from the public. Um so with those comments, let's go through some of the, some of the uh responses. Um I guess the first big one is um from staff, a general overview of of what drives and what drove decisions for pedestrian access, um not from Wesley, not available from Wesley, and the one from Washington Woods, how how that plays out.
Uh John, I think I'll try to answer that cuz I was part of the original discussion. Originally, actually, we talked about trying to have more of a a direct connection, even vehicular traction for Marsh Lane. So you wouldn't have some of the issues that were brought up tonight, where it would be a a dead end for pedestrian activity. Um the neighborhood was um opposed to that. Um and as you pointed out earlier too, I think it's it's fairly well known, the reason Marsh Lane is stubbed out the way it is, the assumption was whenever the former CPSC site, cuz we didn't know we would, we're we're going to be acquiring it as a city for parkland, that would be a a street that would continue on and then connect with the entrance uh that is to CPSC. So based upon that feedback, we converted it to an entirely pedestrian-oriented access point. We thought that was a good solution to allow direct access uh from the Washington Woods neighborhood, similar to what we would like to try to provide to the Wesley neighborhood. But it's much more complicated. As you can tell, there really is no public direct access. We would have to acquire some type of easement between two residential properties. Um and we did do some initial outreach to do that, but didn't have any particular takers um with some of the area property owners that are adjacent, either on Treeworthy for uh Wesley, but we also looked at um you know, there is some adjacency to Midsummer Drive and to Central Court. Um those property owners um have not expressed any interest at this time of providing an access easement. It's not unheard of. We do have some of those. Some of those were built into the neighborhoods as they developed. Um others, uh there's one particularly in Griffith Park that accesses the neighborhood behind. The city actually, in that case, purchased the house and then put in the access point and then sold the house
Mm-hmm.
um to make it happen. So we are committed to trying to continue those, but it's really gonna take some effort um from adjacent property owners to want that to occur uh throughout uh the neighborhood and trying to get them to do it. So if anybody knows of anyone who's interested in helping make that happen, we're willing to look at those access points.
Okay, and it's fair to say, I think that even if the park, if the construction on the park is finished, it's a mature park, any of those access points could be developed down the road as as the neighbors become more um willing or 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 more interested in doing something like that. It wouldn't be off the table um at the clo- construction, the the end of construction for the park, I would assume.
No, and actually, even I think on the of the concept plan, we actually tried to show a way of getting back to Muddy Branch Park. Um connectivity, that would take a lot more property owners in terms of wanting to grant some easement in the rear of their yards. Um but we are committed to doing that at any point that we could actually accomplish that.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, uh Phil, please.
Yeah, John, can I just follow on to to that with a little bit of question for Dennis? Ju- just because this was raised in an in a number of the written correspondences that are in the record, the idea of utilizing eminent domain to just impose an access point on their neighbor's property. You know, that is never a first, a first approach or a pleasant approach or a cheap approach. But beyond either of those things, is access to a park something that's even a justifiable use of of eminent domain for the city? I mean, uh assuming in in this this construct that everyone thought it was a great idea, i- is it even an option?
I'd have to leave that up to Frank. I mean, I can tell you from my standpoint, we have we have not since I've been here used eminent domain for any project that we've done. It's something that the council has not been in favor of. I'm not sure if we, you you know, some of you have been on the planning commission longer than I've been at the city. I'm not aware of any eminent domain that the city has done. There might have been one at one point. We really do try to acquire them through negotiation. We haven't done eminent domain. But Frank could, I I would assume it's legal, but Frank can be the attorney in the room, cuz that's who he is.
Yeah, generally, if it is allowing access to a public area, uh for the most part, it's going to be seen as justified. It the main, the main question is going to be, is it for public use uh rather than is it an absolute necessary or necessity or having a court trying to decide, well, you have two elements of access, what's the need for it? The main thing is, is this going to be public use? But the um often the bigger question in those cases comes down to what the compensation is because government can't just take it. There has to be just compensation for that uh uh for that access. Um but of course, the the city also has to be willing to, willing to take that step, and as Dennis was noting, uh that historically has not been the uh the city's desire, because these are all residents.
Right, right.
Yeah, I I just thank you. I ju- I wanted to make sure we at least addressed it, cuz it was thrown out frankly, seemingly a little casually, like, oh, this is easy, just use eminent domain, and it is not something that is a a first approach or or one that I think the city or us would would wanna use, except in an absolute last resort. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's fair. I think it would take a lot of um, it's a pretty high hurdle to 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 get behind something like that. Um Sunil, were you trying to jump in there? Does I see your hand? You're on mute.
I I just wanna make a comment. Uh I think I mentioned this uh in our sketch plan as well. The reason why we designed uh the walkway the way it is right now, even in future, at some point, we are hoping we might get an easement from uh resident so we can make that connectivity, so we don't have to make any changes to the current design. So that was our intent to make the pathway the way it is right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um and I'm not doing these in any particular order, except in in the way we heard them. Um is there some more, is there a Wi-Fi hotspot in the in this space, or will there be, or can there be?
Yes, um we didn't, um it was on the on the sheets, but we have three blue phones um throughout the um which are security cam- security stations, security, security cameras, and they will also include Wi-Fi um for the park.
Excellent. Okay, great. Um we heard a, we heard endorsement for fully plumbed, and I think we've got enough discussion around how that decision will be made and what the what the forces at work there. Um Dennis, maybe you could go back into a little more on Marsh Lane. You mentioned some improvements. Um there were some concerns about safety and security, um what the narrow, the street narrowing project is. Um wh- what, what exactly will be happening there um that may enhance or, and I guess maybe to back up a bit, we have parks adjacent to and accessed from a lot of residential areas in the city. And um I would assume Dennis, you and your team or the staff in general would have a general sense of what neighborhood services has heard in terms of impacting neighborhoods, whether it's exposed a safety and security issue or not. Um and if it has, what what what's in play for the Marsh Lane improvements that would that would help obfuscate that a bit, but it but it may be um it it may not be that big a deal to begin with, and mostly what you're doing is just improving the quality of that access point. So if you just kind of comment a little bit more on that, that improvement plan.
Yep. Yeah, we're actually just improving the quality of the access point from the pedestrian standpoint. Um currently, Marsh Lane does not have sidewalk on either side. Um it's one of the few um subdivisions that we actually have quite a bit of a number of streets that have side, don't have sidewalk. Um Midsummer Drive has sidewalk, but some of the looped streets that loop back to Midsummer Drive do not have sidewalk either. So really, this is an effort to improve, improve pedestrian safety in the neighborhood and access to the park. We weren't planning on doing any other improvements. We have located a blue phone right there at that entrance. Um and there will be um, you know, lighting with the blue phone um to provide some lighting at that entrance. Uh in addition, you know, it's kind of a a weighing of your pros and cons of narrowing the street. Um you know, we propose that as an option for those property owners uh at w- number one or number three Marsh Lane, so they could retain more of their yard that's currently right of way. Uh or an an actual pedestrian easement that's there. So that's kind of the catch-22. Um we actually think by narrowing the street, people are more likely, um cuz it's unlikely that someone from outside of the neighborhood is gonna use that access point. You know, if you're traveling to the park, you're not gonna, we don't believe that you would drive through the neighborhood and go to Marsh Lane, so it's really mostly internal traffic. If there are gonna be any, I would assume people would probably park on Midsummer Drive, cuz it's gonna give them an easier turnaround um than they would on Marsh Lane, but I could be wrong. I think we're willing to look at should this be a problem of additional signage about no parking or resident parking, if that's where we end up getting, it's just not
So. So then, so when you mentioned the narrowing of the street, that's not a a firm plan yet. That was just an idea that was floated to try to address some of the access concerns?
It it was something that we've looked at to try to give the people who own the properties at one and three Marsh Lane more green space. Um it is currently the plan. Um and it's not like I'm talking ten feet or anything like that. I believe it's only a couple feet. We were just trying to accommodate, so they weren't losing all of their front yard to a sidewalk.
Fair enough. And and what is, what is the city's experience with this condition in other parks? Do do we we don't have any systemic issues with having um public parks adjacent to residential properties, I assume, or or access points to public parks? I was um you know, I was, my own personal experience, I think of places like uh um Green Park, you know, Malcolm King Park, Victory Farm Park, they all have trailheads um that are connected in some way to to adjacent properties, and they in the best, to my knowledge, we haven't experienced a big problem with that, but maybe you could, you could comment more on that.
Yeah, no, we we haven't experienced a big problem with that, and like you point out, there are a number of parks that actually kind of have this dead-in entrance to ball is another park that kind of has that entrance. Um Observatory Park is kind of similar. It it's surrounded all. Uh we do have programs to try to look at those. You know, we will have a police patrol. We also have park observers um that go through the parks um during the day and then police, cuz all of our parks are dusted on. Um you know, really, the more activity a park has from a planning standpoint, um the better off you are from a security standpoint. And so we're hoping that it has a lot more activity by the amenities that we're providing.
But as a, as a general kind of reassurance to the neighborhood, we do have a a long and fairly thorough track record with similar conditions and and um a- and not a, not a systemic problem with that. Um and and the some of the inconveniences that may grow out of this, we we also have um strategies for for mitigating as well, based on what we've done in the past. You mentioned them. Maybe the configuration of the road, maybe some signing, maybe some lighting, whatever it is, but those are all kind of in the toolkit that the city could put, put in play if 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 needed.
Correct.
Okay, great. Um then there was a question about timing and the potential that um the neighbors could have access to the property um prior to that, prior to the start of construction. Is that, and and I don't know, I'm not sure who's, maybe that's, Neil, you're running the project, I guess, maybe you could comment on some of that.
Uh yes, uh we anticipate issuing the contract uh in April of twenty twenty-one. And uh we anticipate this project is gonna take about eighteen months to finish. So we are looking at probably um uh July or August of twenty twenty-two is when most likely we're gonna finish this project. And if anybody wants access to the uh park, they can always contact me right now, so we can, I can coordinate access if they wanna come inside the existing site, if they wanna look at it, so we we can provide access to them. But it is.
You wouldn't open up the site at this point just for for just general use?
Not for general use currently, because we don't have anything in utilities. There is no uh uh monitoring. So currently, it is locked, uh so that is how we are keeping it. Um so because we have some uh demolished uh equipment and also city parking, some vehicles over there temporarily. Uh so that's the reason why we are keeping it locked for right.
And it's not lit, right? So I mean, there'd be some safety issues.
That is correct.
Desk in the evening, okay.
That is correct.
That's true. All right. Um so I I, based on my notes, and that isn't necessarily the most thorough set of notes. Did anybody hear any other questions from the public that that need um need answer, need need an answer or um some follow-up? Staff or or commissioners, anything? Uh Danny, please, you're on mute.
I, we can, yeah, yeah. This, this, I just wanted to address something that that Phil had talked about and because we was talking about like the history of the planning commission, and and you, John, and I are are the more senior um planning commissioners, but but we've always, and John, please correct me if I'm wrong, we've always tried to focus on extending as much goodwill to what's going on in the city when folks have something and try to address issues with with someone, but I can't recall any um discussion about eminent domain. And John, I I didn't know whether you could could comment on that as well. And and even Lloyd, I I don't remember, I don't recall us ever discussing, discussing anything related to eminent domain.
Yeah, and and to be clear, it's probably, it would likely be something at the council level if it was, it was a discussion item or was was to be considered. Um it's it's clearly on a policy level, not, and this is not a site planning issue, but but I agree with you, that would be an extraordinary for us anyway in the city. I think that would be an extraordinary step and not likely to happen if I could take the risk and and make that statement. Thanks, Danny. Um anybody else have anything to to chime in on the answers? Cuz we will get into discussion here in a moment. Just wanna make sure we didn't have any open, open issues or any of the design team wanted to address any of the questions more directly. Okay, no, none of the, none of the muted mics went live. So with that, Chris, do you wanna go ahead and wrap up with the formal recommendation, please?
Sure. Um staff recommends approval of these application based on their compliance with the approved sketch and schematic development plans, the master plan and the M X D zone. However, staff is changing its recommendation from the packet. Instead of approval tonight, staff recommends the planning commission defer the subject applications until the next planning commission meeting on January second, twenty twenty-one. And instead have the planning commission direct staff to return with a draft resolution of approval at that meeting.
Okay, thanks very much. Any questions? Uh commissioners, any questions for Chris on the recommendation? John, oh Danny, please.
And uh you know what? I I I think I'll defer to our discussion first, because let me, let's have a discussion about my 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 question first, before I get back, okay?
Sure enough. Any other questions about the recommendation? All right. So uh Danny, please jump in. What what's uh, where do you wanna start the discussion?
Okay, and you know, it was really interesting when I, when I read through the whole document um earlier this week. Um the thing that I circled was on page eleven, and that it was what the staff talked about as as far as access points. And that came, that came up as a huge, huge um concern from the community that weighed in. And I I thought that that concern, to me, it raised the level almost being um uh in the in the addition. They, I I just to discuss that possibly, you know, just to work, and and the staff seems like they're doing it, to work actively to to find additional access points into this, into the park. But I I don't know how we can, I mean, cuz that seems to be a huge um discussion point. And I was just wondering, should it be a condition?
Yeah, and I wonder too, um maybe, Chris, you would know this, do both the adjoining neighborhoods have HOAs, um active HOAs?
Washington Woods does, Wesley does not.
Wesley doesn't, okay. Um cuz that's another avenue that that Washington Woods could could advocate for that. Um you know, kind of internally with with whatever opportunities might exist. Wesley, I guess, would have to um i- i- if the city wasn't actively doing, and I agree with you, and I think the city should probably actively keep that, keep that discussion open with the Wesley neighbors, but they could also um work among themselves to figure out if there's an opportunity for that in in some form or another. But great point. All right. So let's, let's sort of talk big picture here, commissioners. As a plan, we've seen it really from the very beginning, when the, when the initial ideas came from the, from the ad hoc committee all the way up through the various steps in the plan. And I feel as though, without being very specific about citing the record, that we've been all in favor of it. And then it's been, it's been good planning and good decisions all the way through. And there's probably little to, to critique at this point, except to say, you know, great job to the team that's worked on it. Because it probably realizes a type and a way of doing a park in the city that's going to be fairly unique, which is, which is great. The combination of things and the, the setting and the context and all. So it's, it's really exciting to see that. But getting into some more technical stuff, you know, back into this, I know we have a concert, forest conservation plan that looks for a waiver on some of the tree or the opportunity to take some of the trees off the site, both for, for the purposes of configuring the stormwater, but also there's some that I think are diseased or, or past, past saving. Is there any concern from the commissioners on, on that proposed waiver?
No, none.
Okay. Now, on the, on the park plan itself, there, there wasn't much comment from the, the public on any specific element of the park. Do any of you have anything you want to add about what's in the park or not in the park or, or anything like that? And, and I'll leave it kind of open, whatever, whatever might be on your mind. Please, please jump in.
Well, hey, this is Danny. I'm, I already addressed it. And that was the, the issue with Dog Run. And I believe that, that Alice had talked about it and she said that, that came up during the, during the planning process. So I mean, I would, I would certainly like to see something like that. We have one in, in my neighborhood. It's, it's a great benefit. But you know, we, I guess it's already been discussed.
Yeah. And I do think, and I, again, I can't cite the exact data, but, but Alice, I think was on to it. And I recall this too. There was a really well-done kind of crowdsourced brainstorm work for this that then really, you know, resulted in a really tight priority, set of priorities for the programming. And I, I really respect that process because I think it was a nice wide swath of, of neighbors and, you know, concerned folks and staff and experts and all. And, and I think it was a, a really thorough process. So.
Right. And, and after, yeah, and after the park come, become, you know, comes online and it's been in, you know, been baked in for a couple of years. Maybe, you know, it could be looked at later.
Sure, sure.
Who knows?
Sure enough. Or any other, any other comments from the commissioners? Lloyd, please.
Yeah, just one quick question. Dennis or Chris, one of the conditions that was on the recommendations initially was the state highway administration approving the project. In light of the fact that this is an interesting entrance way, because you've got a, it's a third lane that disappears at tree worthy, I believe. And it's kind of awkward. Do you expect any problems from the state highway administration with regarding the entrance way?
I know Sunil has been actively working with that and with Brendan. So Sunil, maybe you can answer that.
Yes. We are working with S H A on every phase of the design at 50% during the conceptual design, schematic design and the final design. And S H A reviewed and they didn't express any, they provided comments on the notes. So we have submitted a permit application for the final approval, but they have already approved our final design.
Thank you, Sunil. I appreciate that.
Yeah, Lloyd, we actually worked with them. They've been doing ADA improvements along 28. And we actually had them hold off at this intersection for where the road's going to be, and we'll do that at the same time. So they're aware of it and it shouldn't be a problem.
Great. Thank you.
Matt, Phil, any, anything you want to add to the discussion? Okay. All right. I assume that means a tacit approval and support of the project. I, I do have to mention two quick things. I, I was really struck by how staff was so deliberate about mentioning, or maybe, maybe Alice, you and your team did it, that the, that the playground equipment was CP, not CPST standards. That just seems only right, given the site, right? And, and I, I also want to note, I believe, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city has started a providing an opportunity for people to nominate names for the park and on the website.
Yes, and I believe Carolyn could.
Oh, Carolyn, I'm sorry. If you want to mention Carolyn, what, what that is and how that works.
Yeah. So if you go to the project page on our website, there is a link to an online form. So we are taking suggestions for names for the park. We do have a, a team of staff who will be going through those names. Our, our naming committee will come up with about three to five choices. And then that will go before mayor and council in January.
Great, thank you. Okay. Well, if there aren't any more comments, I, I do want to close with just a really, really hearty thank you to, to all that have been involved in this on the, on the city side and, and on the, the design team side, consultant side. It's just really a well-done project. And frankly, Karen, I think, I think, you know, the, the parks and rec, you've been, I know you're new to the, relatively new to the leadership role, but you've, you've seen a lot of going on around here. I, I mean, you guys just do a remarkable job consistently with both the, the, the new stuff that comes into the system and, and the programming. So, so this is right up there with, I think, some of the best work that's, that's come out of this group. So nice work, great job. It's, I'm look, so looking forward to seeing this. It's going to be a great addition to the city. My only regret is that it is somewhat isolated from, from the rest of the city and, and a little, little constraint in terms of access. But, but it's a, it's a great piece of property and, and a great use for it. I'm glad to see it doing, going to this use and not, not something else. I think it's going to be a great asset to the, to the local neighborhoods as well as the, the city at large. So nice, nice work, really. I mean, just take a minute and recognize that.
Thank you.
So I think, Chris, you, you're recommending, staff is recommending we defer approval or, or actually not defer it, but direct staff to draft a, an approval resolution. Do you need a motion for that or just a nod?
Yes, we would, we would need a motion for that, correct? Greg can, Frank?
Yeah, motion, I think.
Yes, that would be, that would definitely be preferred. Yes.
Okay. So that the record is really clean and clear and given our kind of fractured connection here, would you read into the record the motion that should be made for a, an approval resolution, please, if you can?
Sure. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant SP 8648 2020 final site plan approval. And E N V 8649 2020, finding it in compliance with sections 24 dash 170 and 24 dash 171 of the city zoning ordinance with two conditions. The first, the Maryland State Highway Administration must approve the project prior to issuance of any permits. The second, the Department of Public Works and Planning Division must approve the final site plans prior to the issuance of any permits. And the second motion is staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, staff findings and staff recommendation grant is part of final site plan SP 8648 2020. A variance for removal of eight specimen trees, finding the variance request in compliance, the section 22 dash 12D of the city code.
And, and you're direct, you're recommending that we do that via a, be an approval resolution, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So would anyone like to give me an as moved or as, as?
Why, so moved?
If, if I could interject real quick, I think the resolution and, or sorry, the recommendation, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, is actually a deferral tonight in return with a draft resolution of approval at the June meeting. That's Jan, January meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we, we defer any recommendation on E N V 8649 2020 and SP 8648 2020 until our next planning commission meeting.
And direct staff to?
And direct staff to, to create a, a draft resolution.
Second.
Okay.
Let me, let me just do a clarification. Does that cover it? Okay, Frank, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it might be appropriate to add that it would be a draft resolution of approval because that's really the thrust that's being taken. And then staff can meld that from the record.
Okay, Danny.
I, I, I want to amend that it be a draft resolution for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you very much. All right. It's been moved in second. Let me do the, the roll call vote. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. See you at the next meeting with the official paperwork. And again, thank you to the staff and the, and the consultant team. Nice work.
Great job. Yeah. Great job.
Okay. So that was really our one substantive item tonight. That takes us then to, or from the commission. So Phil, anything tonight?
Nope, nothing for me this evening.
Okay. Matt, anything tonight?
Nothing for me.
All right, Lloyd.
Happy and safe holidays ahead. Wear your mask.
Wear your mask.
And to you too. As the governor says, wear your damn mask.
Never one to mince words. Danny, anything tonight?
Just a quick note, I'm a part of a, a north, northeast planning consortium. And we have a whole series of webinars that are, are, have been planned. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to send to, to probably Greg and John Schlick thing, a whole list of some webinars that we have coming up. And I would injure, encourage you to, to take a part of, you know, participate if you can. And it's, it's also for planning commissioners, boards of appeals and for staff. So I, I will, I will share that information with Greg and John later this week.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So Greg, anything tonight?
Just that this is our only meeting of December. So happy holidays to the commission. And we have two, we have a work session, a joint work session coming up on December 14th. And that's on the Lake Forest Mall and the next steps on the master plan. And then there's a joint public hearing for the 700 North Frederick Avenue S D P. And that is scheduled for December 21st. And then our next meeting is January 6th of 2021.
Okay, great. Thanks. I think you all polled us for the 14th last week and you should probably have answers by now. But the 21st, I think that email just came out today. So everybody take a peek at that before too many more days. That would be great. All right, thanks. If there's nothing else from anybody, anybody? Have a great holiday season. Stay safe and a happy new year. And we'll see. I know we'll be together for the joint sessions with the council, but as just the planning commission, see you next year for that. And in the meantime, have a good evening. We're adjourned.
Happy New Year.
Happy holidays. Happy holidays.